So to the board members, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight, and thank you for your service as elected officials filling in these critical roles and serving in the capacity that you do. It is an honor and a privilege for me to be here tonight as one of the three finalists, and I feel very honored and I'm humbled to be here, and I look forward to the dialogue that we'll have as we go through this. I look forward to the questions. I gotta say, being back in this auditorium reminds me of Caroline playing Morgan le Fay in the school play at Camelot, and me coming up on this stage to get a piece of paper that said I was going to the United States Air Force Academy a day or two ago. So it is very nice to be back home and back in the community here and interacting with all of you. I want to do a special thanks to Mr. Qualls for all the coordination with you all and working with us and you all and making this whole process work. First time I've been through this process, so it's been a learning experience for me, and I've enjoyed it and picked up quite a bit. I want to start also by thanking the teachers, the principals, and anyone that's working in the school system that's here today. You all are doing a very important role, and you are serving, and each and every day you make a difference in the lives of many kids as you develop them and they grow and they get ready to go out into society, and we want them to be contributing members of society, and you all play a critical role, so thank you for what you're doing each and every day to help them be successful and to grow and to develop. I also want to thank all the folks that are behind the curtains here who made all the arrangements to make the visit over the last couple of days happen. Everything, the breakfast yesterday morning with all the questions from the principals and the central office, the time spent with the community leaders and the elected officials, that was very good and very informative. The tour was very good, running around and looking at all the great things that are going on in the county and how it's growing, that was fantastic. The best part was getting out and seeing the schools, and I had a blast seeing the passion that all the teachers and everyone working in the school district have, principals, everybody involved, all the great things that they had going on. Going to West and going into one of the CDC classes and talking to the kids and looking at the passion for the teachers as they're trying to teach them and let them learn, that was just remarkable watching that happen. And touring at Manley and seeing Ms. McCamble and her staff working in the cafeteria who were so focused on making sure the kids were well nourished and they were valued and they showed the kids the right level of respect, and going in the back where the kitchen was and people washing dishes and everything and shaking their hand and talking to them about what all they were doing, telling them how important it was, that was just showed the passion that everyone there had. And then going over to Westview, great, got to see a lot of great folks, teachers everywhere were fantastic, principals, assistant principals, and then at Westview got to see Ms. Daniels who was the custodian that I got to run into and talked to her about how she kept her school so clean and how proud she was, and what I walked away from that with was just an air of the professionalism and the way everyone that's in the district and how important they see the role of educating kids. Just amazing, and that was very, very good to me, and it gave me, it really uplifted me to see what they were doing and the contributions that they were making in educating the next generation as they come along. So I'm gonna go right out of the bat here and say, I know I'm the unicorn of the final three candidates. I'm the one that doesn't have the public education background. I've got the military background, and I'm gonna take a couple of minutes and talk about why I want to do this, and then I'm gonna take a couple of minutes and talk about why I think I am prepared to do this. So why do I want to do this? March of last year, I came here to East and we went into Dr. Gibson Library, and I met with some of you, the school board members, and Dr. Perry, I'm pretty sure was there, and we had a meet and greet, and we talked a little bit because I was gonna come over and talk to the junior ROTC, and then I was gonna go and do a little bit of touring here, and then I was gonna go over to Marstown West, do a little bit of touring, and then what I was gonna do was talk to all the kids in the school. And that was how we kinda started. And the way I started that morning was, I thanked Dr. Perry and you, the school board members, for those that filled your roles when I was going through school, for the way that they prepared me in conjunction and in parallel with what mom and dads did, setting solid foundation, but what they did to prepare me to go out in the world and be successful as an Air Force officer. Without the education system that I'd had here in Hamlin County, I would not have been prepared to go to the Air Force Academy, and I would not have been prepared to do the multiple things that I've done within the Air Force, and I thank you for those that had done that before, and I even gave Dr. Perry one of my challenge coins for that. And then what I said was, now I challenge you to do that for the next generation, because you all are the ones that are shaping them, setting the policies, and Dr. Perry at the time, you're shaping that along with the principals and the teachers so that they're ready to be contributing members of society, and they're ready to go out and face the world whatever they decide they want to go do. So when I found out that Dr. Perry was moving to, moving away from here and the position had come open, I looked myself in the mirror and said, do you want to come back into the community and watch from the side, or do you wanna work with the school board and the others of the district to make that difference and grow that next generation and prepare them? And so what I wanted to do and what I hope that I can do is take the years of experience and different experience, leadership experiences and other things that I have learned in the military, bring that back into the community that I love, and give back and serve in this role to try to make a difference. So that is the why I want to do this. Why do I believe I am the right person to do this? Obviously, my background is very, very different. The first thing that I fall back on are the values that mom and dad started setting in me and with a lot of the individuals that are still in the community, and how they raised me and what I stand for, and adding on top of that are the core values that the United States Air Force has allowed me to follow for now, coming up on 38 years. Integrity first, service before self, excellence in all we do. Those are the values along with what mom and dad taught me that I would bring into this role, and I think integrity first is key to anything you're ever gonna do, and you gotta have that. That's the foundation. The other part that I bring is leadership. I've spent most of my career in a leadership role. By the time that I retire, I will have spent more than, more than 50% of my career either as the individual in charge of organizations ranging from 200 up to the size of the organization I have today, which is over 89,000, and all in between on that spectrum, and then, or as the deputy, the second in charge for over, I've done that for almost 20 years. And I believe that leadership experience and learning how to collaborate and learning how to build teams and learning how to communicate through things like testifying in the Senate Armed Services Committee Subcommittee's and the House Armed Services Subcommittee's, and in public forums and doing contract rollouts and being on the stage when things didn't go right and people are pummeling you with questions, I think the communication, the collaboration, the leadership, all of those things prepare me to meet all the responsibilities that would be required of a director. So with that, I am thrilled to be here. I am very excited to have this opportunity. Caroline and I have already bought a home in that community, we're already refurbishing that home, we're looking to get back into the area and back into the fabric of the community to drive this community forward to even greater things. So without any comments, thank you very much.
General Bunch, you have answered my first question completely.
Okay.
And ask.
Okay.
So let me move on to another. Being in a leadership role, you have to make difficult decisions regarding personnel. Share with us how you've handled such a situation and how you arrived at your decision.
So the, I've made a lot of decisions that are money and risk and all kinds of things. The hardest ones are always the ones that you're dealing with individuals and are with people. And you make those in a lot of different ways. Some of the ones that I've made, I've decided to remove people from their positions. I've made decisions on who I needed to develop or who I needed to stop the development of because they weren't growing at the rate, and achieving what I needed them to do, and they were plateauing, and I no longer needed to give them additional leadership opportunities, and I've made those decisions. I've made decisions to discipline airmen along the way, and I've made decisions that individuals no longer needed to be part of our Air Force because they could not live up to the culture and follow the core values that I talked about a moment ago. Those are ones that I weigh out very heavily before I make a decision. I'll make a decision to spend money, if you give me a good briefing on the right return of investment and what it does, I can make that decision really easily, that's pretty easy calculus for me. But when you're dealing with lives and the lives of their families, those are ones you wanna take very seriously, you wanna think your way through. On the ones that I've made those decisions, I weigh it out and I talk to the leadership that's around the individual airmen before I make that final call to get their read on the situation. I make sure I've got all the facts from those that are coming forward, and where I don't have facts, I go have someone investigate to make sure I'm operating off the right information before I make that call. I weigh out what it does to the overall organization, and what this kind of precedent may it set with what I am giving, does it follow rules, is it not following the rules? And if I make the call one way or the other, how does that play out for the next individual that we have to discipline, and how does that part roll? Because any decision you make, others are gonna watch it, whether you wanna believe it or not. They're gonna know whether you think you're doing it in private or not, and if you're not careful when you make a decision whether to punish or not punish, particularly when you don't punish, you may actually set a new standard for what's accepted behavior, and you gotta think your way through that very carefully before you make a decision not to take action against someone. So, the other one you have to weigh out are the other individuals that are actually following all the rules, and what does it mean to them if you don't let someone follow the rules? They now, may now believe you've slighted them and you're not operating in the right manner. All of those are factors that go into and weigh into my mind when you are making the decision that you no longer are going to serve in the role that you are today. Now, that does not mean you immediately give up on those people, you gotta have a wingman for us, a wingman, someone to look out for them, and someone to communicate with them, and still treat them with the proper amount of dignity and respect that their position deserves, but there comes a time when after you weigh all those things out and you need to remove folks, that that's what you have to do for the overall benefit of the organization. And everyone else is watching that, and you're setting the standard, and they understand where the rules are and how they do things. So it is, people decisions are the ones that if I lose sleep over decisions, they're the ones that I lose sleep over, because we have 89,000 airmen in the organization I run right now. I love all 89,000 of them. There are days I don't always like all 89,000 of them because of what they do, but I still gotta treat them with respect, they all have value, and I gotta make sure I'm doing the best I can to take care of them. Where I'd come into this position and get the privilege of working in this position, I will love every employee that's within the school system, and I will wanna take care of them. There will be individuals along the way that we may have to take steps and take disciplinary actions about, but those will always be well thought out, and they will be in alignment with the policies that the board and the district have got in place, and we'll ensure that those are followed and we will communicate what we're doing. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes. My question. First of all, he's got my ear up, 'cause I wanted to pilot, didn't quite work out, so I always looked up to him, and I thank you for your service. I know you've had a lot of successes in your life, they don't put four stars on you, so you're worth it. By the way, I did some research, is it two four-star deal right now in the Air Force in your mind?
Say that again.
Is there just two four-stars?
No, they're, they're usually, depending on who the combatant commanders are, we usually have 12 or 13 in the entire Air Force.
Okay, well, it's still a privilege to have you here. What, of your many successes, what is your, what would you think, other than those four-stars, you're a cracking professional achievement, and on that same vein, what would be, you consider one of your failures?
So, one of the key things I need everybody to understand, my rank has absolutely nothing to do with whether I believe I've been a success or not. One of the things that I've told all the airmen that work for me, set, set your standard of whether you've served well or done things based on what you've been able to accomplish and the lives you've touched, not on achieving a certain rank. So my name tag on my desk does not have any rank, it just has Arnie Bunch, because whenever I hang up this uniform, which is coming pretty soon, I'm still gonna be Arnie. I'm gonna be the kid mom and dad raised in this area. So my rank has absolutely nothing to do with anything that I've ever believed I've done as a success. That one has not got anything to do with how I value what I've been able to do. Caroline and I have been extremely blessed to get to do a lot of different things that we never thought we would do. And I could talk about the F-16s we had in the hangar with them all open, when the fire suppression system went off and we lost two weeks trying to clean them up, and we had to get them modified and get them to Pakistan, or we were gonna loop, ran the risk of losing our ability to fly missions out of Pakistan into Afghanistan at a critical time for the nation with what we were doing, and the team that built all that and did all that, that one's, that one's a good one, but probably not the one that I would immediately jump to. Could talk probably about the one where we reorganized the organization that I was in, and we went from three individual locations to one location that I was the commander of, saving hundreds of millions of dollars a year and realigning the resources so that we could be more efficient and effective using them. That one's good, but probably not the one that I see the greatest. Anything that I viewed as great has been done as a team. There's nothing that I've done individually that I take great credit for. I've had help all along the way, and I know that to be successful, you gotta work together as a team and you gotta collaborate. And the one that I would say is probably our biggest success is fighting through COVID with what we needed to do within our command. In the command, I have a very diverse workforce. I have a workforce that works on airplanes on the flight line, I have a workforce that works in vaults because of the classification of the material that they work on, I have individuals that award contracts, they do financial management, I have a, the United States Air Force Test Pilot School is part of mine, we need to train test pilots, very diverse workforce. And we went from a Friday of everybody being in work at more than 50 locations around the world to Monday sending everybody home and trying to figure out what we were gonna do. And what we had to balance was, how do we bring back safely the ones that I've gotta get into the workplace to get the mission done so that we can fly sorties and project freedom around the world, and how do I get the right IT systems and the IT backbone to allow the ones that can telework, keep them working so that I can keep awarding contracts and keep pushing technology to get things in the field, to how do we set up child development centers across the United States Air Force so that we can still provide care for kids so that moms and dads can come to work? And I looked on the, on my bookshelf on how to lead an 89,000-person organization in a pandemic, and I couldn't find one, okay? There wasn't one. So we had to make it up on the fly. So what we did as a team, I worked with the center commanders and the installations, and I asked them, what priorities do we need to set? And we set priorities for what were the most important work things we needed to get done, and our, the safety of our airmen was number one. Getting the nation's mission done was number two. We need to take care of our airmen, they're our most valuable resource, just like in a school district, the people, that's our most important resource. And so we set priorities for what we needed to go do, and then what we did, we pulled in our public health and everybody else, and we rearranged the depot lines and the assembly lines to space people out, take the right measures, and we communicated all that out to the workforce to make sure we could bring them back safely. And we invested in laptops, and we invested in licenses so people could use IT systems we'd never used before, and we had to loosen up some controls on different things, and we started doing Zoom and Teams and all these things that all the teachers and principals have learned to love or hate along the way while they've been fighting through COVID. But we had to get this done so that we could keep generating air power. And when we started this, and the rules that I gave were, here are the priorities, you are the people on the ground, on the spot, I trust you to take care of the airmen, tell me what you're doing and tell me what I can do to help you. And so, I got out of their way, and if they needed medical supplies, I went to the federal or state and I got them medical supplies, and if I needed to get them from another base, I pulled them from another base. And if I needed to communicate issues at state and local level, I found out people answered when you're a force star quicker than they did when I was a captain, and I would go ask questions and I would tell them what I needed, and I'd find out if they were gonna help me get it done, if I needed to, I'd go over their head, because we had to get the mission done. So we started getting that, and if the installation, the base level, they needed help or they wanted to inform me, I wanted to know what was going on so I'd get weekly updates on all the activity, but I let the people below do the JLB and trust them, and when I do that, they feel more respected, they feel more valued, and that makes everybody else around them feel more trusted and more valued, and we were able to get that done. And then what we found was, some of our airmen weren't comfortable coming back into the workplace. So I got on airplanes and I went to all my depot sites, and I toured the line that they were gonna be working on, and I went to everywhere that I was gonna ask them to go do, and do what, some of the things that, but everywhere I wanted them to go, I went. And what I wanted them to do, I did some of that, I watched how they did it, and I praised them, and I talked to them, and I patted them on the back, and I made them share lessons learned, and I made them communicate what they were gonna do. Before we got there, they all had to brief me on how they were gonna bring the workforce back in so that I knew they were safe. But I went to all these locations to build the confidence of our airmen and their families. So we got them in the workplace. What did we do that year? We turned out a few less airplanes because the supply chain got hit and other things, but we still kept airplanes flying and we didn't lose any capability. We awarded more contract dollars that year than we had awarded the two or three previous years. We were able to make sure we took care of all of our airmen, and we were much safer at what we did on the bases than we were in our communities, and we kept our workforce safe, and we did the nation's job. That, I would say, is probably what I value as one of our biggest successes as a team. The only ones that I really ever question, at the end of the day, I still go home, look myself in the mirror and try to ask myself, what could I have done better, what could I have done different, and how I could have been a better commander today? How could I have been a better airmen? How could I have been a better officer? How could I have talked to the people better so that they felt more valued? The ones that I have probably fretted over the most, and they weren't what I would call failures, but the ones that pick at me the most, Dr. Gibson, are the ones where I made personnel decisions, and I decided I'm not gonna be able to get this person moved up and promoted, and then I watched them do better, and maybe I didn't make exactly the best decision I could based on the information I had at the time. So I don't view anywhere I've had abject, now, one of the things I've learned, particularly this time of social media where stuff moves at the speed of heat, and a lot of the time you're communicating, you don't always have the best information, I've had to come back and say, hey, I was wrong, that's not what happened. As a leader, you just gotta own that, okay? You gotta make sure everybody understands I'm giving you the best information I got right now, but I communicated wrong, here's what I did, here's what I didn't know, here's what the real situation is, sorry, and we'll try to do better. Those are probably the ones I would say that I contemplated most.
General Bunch, vouchers and church schools and concerns on public schools, just one problem with it, we're on different planes, and some have extra, public schools have more guidance, so, how can you have us deal with that, and how would you feel about that?
Yeah, so that's a, that's one that I was not tracking as closely until I started learning a little bit more about what's going on here, and I'll give you where I'm at right now, and this is one where, one of my leadership philosophies is, none of us is as smart as all of us. And what I mean by that is, there are probably gonna be things, if I'm selected for this role, that I'm not gonna immediately know all the answers, but what I do know is, you have a lot of professionals who are very, very good in this school system, that I can go to and ask for help, and working together, we can always find the best answer. But on the vouchers, what I would say is, I don't, I believe they're coming. It's just a matter of how, how much it's gonna be and what's there. And I am with you in that I believe we need to work to try to get everybody held to a similar standard, and we have the guidelines to where we're much more closely aligned. But the best thing that we can do is make it to where our parents don't wanna use vouchers. And that's by growing the school system and making, setting high achievement marks and growing over time, and making everyone feel that they are getting what they need for their children, and we are getting what we need for the community so that they don't believe they need to go down that path to go to a private school or a charter school. That is what I believe will be what we have to work on the most, because we have very dedicated, I mean, the number of people that were there yesterday morning, standing along the back wall, shows how much the leadership in the schools and in the central office value what they do and how important it is. That was a clear sign that, hey, this is a big deal for a lot of people if you get this role. So I would need to work with them and with the board on how do we raise that level and continue improving so that a parent goes, yeah, I don't wanna go to a charter school, I want them in the school here because they're preparing them to go either into a trade or to get ready to go to college, or whatever they wanna go do, prepare them so they're ready to go out into community and contribute.
General Bunch, first of all, I want to thank you for your service. I have a high regard for getting in and out of the military, so thank you very much for your help.
It's an honor and a privilege.
The question I had to ask deals with, came from a survey that we conducted during school restriction in the county. Our public survey indicated that more than 50% of responses listed academic growth as the number one priority in the next five years. So what should be your, what would be your plan for Hamlin County students to perform at a higher level?
So, that's a great question and one that is very important and one that I would tell you I will have to develop, but I'll tell you how I wanna go develop that plan. I am now in my seventh commander tour as a commander, and only one time have I gone into an organization where I took command, even though most of the roles that I went in and took command of, I was reasonably familiar with, where I went in with a clear path of exactly what I needed to go do, and that was when I went in and had been told, we're reorganizing the whole structure, you're gonna be the first commander, you've got to standardize processes across 34 different locations and 18,000 people, and you gotta make it happen. And that was day one, job one, I knew what I needed to go do, I had a plan when I came in, and it was something I was very familiar with, but all the other ones that I have gone into, even if I am very, very familiar with the role that I am stepping into, I have not immediately gone in and started directing, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna do this. Every one of the locations I've gone into, I've gone in and I've communicated with the individuals that are there and are part of that, and a big part of communication is listening. And so I'll use the example of how I went into the role that I am in now. The command that I am in now was formed in 1992. From 1992 until today, I have spent more than 75% of my career serving in that command. Now, others, I went to the headquarters, others I went to somewhere else, but for over 75% of my career, I have worked in Air Force Material Command, which I'm the commander of today. And many thought when I first came in that I would immediately come in and I would And many thought when I first came in that I would immediately come in and I would start trying to change things. That is not what I did. I came in and I talked with my center commanders, that's one level down. Here it would be me talking with the principals. And then I sent survey teams out and they went to other parts of my organization to, to hear what is happening across the board? And what is causing you to feel that we're not able to perform to the level that we need to? In other words, higher academic standards that continue to grow. And what we got back out of that was eighty thousand comments from the airmen across my command for what they needed. And then we brought those comments back and I looked at the guidance that I'd been given from above. There were certain things when I stepped into the role that I was told, you need to do, you need to watch our science and technology twenty-thirty plan. You need to work on innovation. Those were ones that we worked in the headquarters and with our center commanders. But for those that we got from the field, we, we threw all those comments. And we developed what we thought we needed to do to get after those. And we didn't do that just within the headquarters. Here, maybe central office. What we did was, we worked with individuals in the field that were out doing a lot of the work and doing those things. And they brought all that back and we laid out about five or six things that we needed to immediately go do. And we built a plan for what we were gonna do to improve our facilities. We built a plan for what we were gonna do to improve our I T backbone. We built a plan for, uh, to develop a supervisor course. Because quite honestly, our first level supervisors weren't cutting the mustard and they weren't doing a good job. We built a plan to hold more people accountable, back to part of the discipline that we talked about earlier, and how we were gonna do that. And then, once we built that plan, I, as the leader, communicated that plan to the workforce for what we were gonna do. To show that I was accountable for executing it and I was responsible for making sure that we measured up to what we were gonna go do. And we have done that over the last three years and others along the way. But that is how I have done it in the past, even, as I said, in an organization that I have spent seventy-five percent since it was formed of my time in that I knew very well. What I would want to do when I came in, if I'm selected for this role, again, I keep saying that and I hope I am, I hope that's coming through reasonably clear. Uh, but hoping that I am selected for this role, then I will need to get out into the schools. If I am selected, unless somebody tells me I can't do it, I will be in a school day one. And I'll be going everywhere. And talking to everybody about what's going on and getting their inputs. And I will meet with the principals and I will reinvigorate and, and keep going with the dialogue with the teachers. And I'll talk to the food service workers and the cafeteria managers and that workforce and the custodial staff and the bus drivers. Bus drivers are critical. I can remember getting on the bus in Russville, the guy was happy-go-lucky and it made my day better every day when I got on and he was smiling and joking around for that ride to Russville Elementary and then to East. So, everybody that's part of the school system is important and brings value to what we need to go do. I also need to talk with you and let you tell me where you think we need to focus. And we need to talk to some of the other individuals in the community, the county commissioners and some of the other folks that are funding and the parents. And get those inputs and then build a plan and strategy to come forward that I would then bring to you and we would work together to go implement. That is how I believe we need to improve our academic goals and standards and achievement within the district.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
General Bud, good to see you again.
Yes, sir.
Question I'd like to ask you is, how important is career training and how would you focus on that to meet individual students' needs?
So, um, I will tell you, that's an area that has really grown and developed since I left school and one that I'm very impressed with what's going on. Uh, when Mr. Carter left the other day and we, and he was replaced, they had a great write-up and I'm gonna say Mr. Daniels, I may not have the name right. But his replacement as well as Chuck, and it was amazing reading what they had done with the program. And all the ways that it was being utilized. And that's different. When I was here, the push was, you need to go to get a four-year degree. That was what, um, from my father, it was optionally mandatory that I was gonna go get a college degree. That, that was, there, there was no ifs, ands or buts about it. And so, what I think I've seen the school do as time has gone on and working with the community, there's a greater appreciation for those tech trades. And there is a great, not everyone wants to go be a doctor. The school, district and the way we teach has gotta give those that want to go do that and prepare them so that they're ready if they wanna have that opportunity. Or they wanna go off to the Air Force Academy or they wanna go do something else. But we also, and I think you've done it, an amazing job here in the district. Of using C, the career training and technical training avenues to prepare people to immediately go do what they wanna go do. And I am extremely impressed. And I, right now, I would say, unless I'm told otherwise, we just, we just gotta keep doing what we're doing. Each individual student, child, young adult, has got a different goal, different aspirations, and we need to make sure we're addressing all those. And we give them those chances to do whatever it is. Now, we need to expose them to some different opportunities along the way. You know, if you would have asked me when I was a sophomore in high school if I wanted to go into the Air Force, I would have not even probably known what the Air Force was. Okay? It was one that I was, that was not an avenue that I even considered. When I went to the Air Force Academy, I'd never even been on an airplane. So, I, I think you've, you've got to expose at an early age to a vast array of what's out there in the world. You've gotta create avenues so that they can chase those dreams. And again, whether it's a doctor or whether it's insurance or whether it's dietitian, wha- whatever it may be. Create those avenues and those career things so that they have the ability to go do that. That's where I think we've gotta continue to keep our focus. Versus, versus going, it's all gotta be A P or it's all gotta be C T E or it's all gotta be this. There, there's not a one-size-fits-all for any individual student that's in this district. And we've gotta have a, a system that's flexible enough to be able to meet the needs of all of them.
General Bud, some schools may have a teacher retention issue. How would you determine if a school has an issue and what would you do to address that issue?
So, uh, as I've read up and learned a little bit more about public education, as I've prepared for some of the dialogues. Uh, across the nation, there are a lot of retention issues within the teachers. A lot of them do not feel valued. And one of the key first steps is, you've gotta make the teachers and the principals feel valued. You gotta make everybody feel valued. Um, and so, um, having talks, making them feel valued, let them understand how valuable they are and what an important role they play. Critical to making them feel important enough that they wanna stay and do this for us. There are a couple of different ways that I think you can do this. One of those goes into my leadership philosophy, which many believe that the leader of the organization is at the top. I actually believe in servant leadership, which I actually believe the pyramid is upside down and I actually work for everybody in the organization. Uh, I, they don't work for me, I work for everybody in the organization and my job is to remove roadblocks and fight to get them resources. And through bureaucracy and policies that may be hindering their abilities so that we can move out together and let them feel valued and informed. Part of that, working at the bottom and working for everyone, is about delegating. And so, to me, as a director, I will equate that to what I do today. I don't make decisions on things that I want to reserve my time and my energy and effort on making decisions that only I, as the commander, can make. That is how I would initially come into the director role. I wanna focus, I don't want, I wanna know what's going on in all the schools, but I don't wanna make all the decisions each and every day of what's going on. That's not what you're bringing me, that would not be what you would bring me into this role for. You'd be bringing me into this role for leadership. But you also have teachers and principals that are leaders. And if I can delegate authorities down and let them make decisions, number one, they can make the decision probably in a more timely manner than going through different levels and make that happen. But the other thing that you do is, you empower them. And they feel more valued. They feel more respected. They feel more trusted. And when they feel that, that promulgates out to other parts of the school. And if the principal feels more valued and they're getting more say, then the teachers see that and they feel more valued. And they get to do that as well and it feeds on itself. Think that's one of the first things. The other one, and I, I, I have to praise you, at least what I think I saw at the last scorecard, your retention rates are ninety-four percent or above. And that is outstanding. Because you can't keep training new teachers. What I have read and I've had, uh, yesterday I had a principal kinda correct me a little bit, which is good, I'm still learning. Uh, what I have heard for the most part is, if you can get teachers and keep them through the first five years, they've got their feet under them, they're on a solid foundation. And you're not training as many new ones and you're not expending those kind of resources. And so, I think bringing them in and nurturing them through that first five years is critically important, but you all are already doing a good job. Your salaries are in a good position, so you're doing all those things. So I would hope to keep that up and look and see if there's a problem. If you have a problem in one school, then you probably need to go in and take a look at one school and figure out exactly what's going on. The other one though, and I know you're trying to cut me off, ma'am. Uh, the other one that I would say would be, that I will bring with me from what I'm doing in my command now. I get eight names a month for eighty-nine thousand people. I get eight names. They're from all over the United States Air Force. I call those eight people cold call personally. Many of them are airmen first class that are twenty-year-old, working in public health at Edwards Air Force Base. Or they're an individual running finance at Joint Base San Antonio, doing something probably G S eleven, maybe which is a younger officer, maybe a senior enlisted. And I cold call them. And I've usually got about three notes on what they've done over the last month. And the whole purpose of the call, thank you. Those are the most powerful words to make people feel valued. They're simple, but if you use them in the right way, they feel valued and they understand how much you appreciate them. And so, what I actually challenge my young officers and my young, uh, civilians, count how many times you say thank you in a day. Because if you are not saying thank you a lot of times, you probably need to check your leadership style. Because you may be saying I too much. I is reserved for when there's something that goes wrong and you're taking responsibility. We is reserved and used often when you're talking about successes and what you've been able to accomplish. So those are where I would kinda go, ma'am.
Doctor Hassan. So, this question says, our survey also indicated that almost two-thirds of the respondents uh, desire the next director to inspire trust or having a willingness to listen to different opinions. How would you focus on achieving this? Maybe a little bit of a twist on this, but, you know, in the military, I've, I've been in the military, but, you know, you're, you're a general, force star general. And, uh, when you, when you do a command, I think it goes down, it gets passed on. I think in the, the school system, how would you handle men if parents and they're having different issues? So, it's not so, I don't think it's structured as it is. And what would be your method of trying to handle this situation?
So, uh, so one of the things that many people, and many people believe in the military, if you've watched movies. Uh, many people believe that a general officer says, go do something and everybody jumps and they immediately go do that. The reality of it is, there's nothing that really gets accomplished on a grand scale without a whole lot of dialogue and collaboration and being out there and talking to people and listening to what's going on. So I have the most diverse workforce in the United States Air Force. And, and this does, that, follow on, it is gonna play into how I'm gonna handle this. And so, many people, when I talk about the most diverse workforce, they immediately start thinking about ethnicity. Or they think of gender. And those are important ones and, and we need to be observing and it's even in your goals that you have to have a teacher force that is more reflective of the community that's in your pulse. And I think that's a very good goal. But I also have very varying education levels. I have nineteen-year-old, tech-trained, only individuals that are working on the depot line, doing welding and sheet metal work and running lays and running machines. And I have individuals that have multiple PhDs. I have financial managers, contracting officers, I T specialists, pilots, navigators. I've got the whole deal. The other part that not everyone realizes is the age diversity that I have. I got a nineteen-year-old carrying a gun guarding the base, wearing a uniform. And I've got a lady at Hanscom Air Force Base that last year we gave her a seventy-five years of service certificate. So as the leader of the organization, I have to be able to keep, oh, by the way, we have the largest union in the United States Air Force. Another little data point. So, as a leader, when I try to, when I communicate, and again, a lot of communicating is listening. When I communicate and we lay out the paths of where we're going, I have had to create an environment where I am accessible across that spectrum of diverse viewpoints and experiences and education levels and ages. And I have to create an environment where they can come up to me and tell me things are not great and I bite their head off. Okay? And I've gotta create at times an environment where someone comes and whispers something to me and I go look at something behind the scenes that may or may not be a problem. So I have to create that kind of an environment. How does that play into what I see as being a director and parents and everything else? I see him as very, very similar. Uh, the other part that, and, and I'll tell you that again. So on my desk, I have a little fishbowl. One of those little portable ones you get, about yay big around, holds maybe quart, half gallon of water if you fill it with water. Mine's filled with plastic. And in the fishbowl, there's a little goldfish down at the bottom of it and it's got bugged-out eyes. And it's the only thing in the fishbowl. There's no little scuba dude, there's no little castle, there's no other fish, there's no little grass thing that many of you might find in aquarium. That has been on my desk since two thousand and six in every job that I've had. That is my reminder that when I walk out of my office, I am always the commander. And I have to be approachable and everyone is watching each and everything that I do. And whether I'm at the grocery store or whether I'm at the golf course or whether I'm at the gym working out or whether I'm walking through Walmart trying to buy something, I'm always the commander. If I'm selected for this position, I will always be the director. And that means I'm gonna have parents that are gonna approach me when I'm out. And I'm gonna have business leaders and I'm gonna have elected officials. And I have to create an environment where I can take those inputs in and decide what I need to do with them. But it's about being approachable. Because you never know when you interact with one of those people, if you give them a very negative impact or a positive, and you need them to be negative. Because as the director, if I interact with people, when they go home, they're gonna talk about me. And I need that to be positive. Because as director, if I create a positive image, it's positive for every person that works in the school district. And it's positive for you all, because I will be a reflection of you if I'm selected for this. And as this soup, as the, either the superintendent or the director, I will be a reflection of what's going on at every level of what's going on in the education system. And that is something that I take very, very seriously. The one other item though, that I will do, or at least unless I find out differently, and yet again, I'm learning, so I gotta have a little bit of a, again, I'm the unicorn. I will ask, have you talked to the teacher? I will ask, have you talked to the teacher? Have you talked to the principal? We have a chain of command within the military, and we want people to work them so that things get handled at the lowest level. It goes back to the delegation thing. I don't want to solve every problem that's going on in the school system. That's not what you all would select me to go do. I need the principals and the teachers handle those things at the lowest level so they can get them done quickly, they interact with the parents, because I want parents involved. I think parents being involved is better overall for the school, because they know what's going on, they interact with the teachers and the principals, and they feel more connected. So hopefully I answered your question, sir. Yes, sir.
That completes our first round of questions, and I was, you know, taking about the time.
Okay, so you're telling me I need to go a little quicker this round than I did that? You're telling me I was a little, well, you're telling me I'm a little long-winded there? Okay.
I'm telling you, like in the military.
Yeah, I got it.
The command that I have to, you know, turn all of them.
Yes, ma'am.
So I would be fired. Not that we can get all those.
Okay.
But, um. Dr. Schilling. Very good.
Madam Chairman, his answers have been soaked with oil. He's taken away by every question that I have. So instead of just making up some of them, I may not ask someone else. I'm saying, no, I'm the best question. Thank you. Um, we, because we knew each other a long time.
Yes, sir.
I've asked you, and I want you to move, the rest is, why in the world do you want to do this? I know you're committed, but you're, these parents can be, I mean, just try to treat the kids with grace. Much less the kid that says, "Our kids are genius and fit to do anything."
Yeah. So, I gave you the challenge that I kind of gave the board when I was here before in Dr. Gibson Library over here. And the reason was, I wanted to be part of growing that, that's why I wanted to go do this. One of the comments, and this, I think gets to the true heart of your question, Dr. Gibson. Someone, when we first did this, I got a lot of, "Why would you do this? What would you want to do?" And someone asked, "Couldn't he make more?" Was one of the comments that I got. With people thinking that, if I were to go out and capitalize on what I've done with my career and do some of the other things, and some of the things that were proposed, couldn't I make, it was kind of a question. And I don't know whether that would happen or not, because I haven't done that, but that was, someone thought that would be something that I would do. And my response back was, "I couldn't make a bigger difference." So I don't know that there's a role that I could step back into the community here and make a bigger difference than the position that I've thrown my name in the hat for. And it is not going to be easy. I will readily admit that. But if I believe that for the community to be vibrant, sustained where it's at, and grow, the education, public education system is the most vital part of that and the foundation to make that happen. If we do not have a good school system, businesses are not going to come in. I mean, I actually have, one of my sons graduated in this school, from this school district, and they came here because I trusted this community to educate him. I lived geographically separated for three years, because I didn't trust the school system that I was going to have to move that child to. So I am very well aware of how important a school system is. In the military, it is the first question that the families start asking when we start moving them around, is what's going on with schools? So for this, the quality of the education system, and the quality of the graduates that we turn out to be ready to be contributing members of society, to me is a barometer of the vitality and the growth potential of this community. And so, I want, I love Moorestown. I love Hamlin County. You know, I have, anybody asks me, I'm from East Tennessee. Proud of it. Never lost the accent, because I didn't want to. Proud of it. And I want to come back into this community and make a difference. That's the main reason, Joe.
Okay, I mean, this, this might be on people's minds, what's your commitment timeline? How far do you see yourself, if you're a creator here?
Yep.
It's like, so I wouldn't have to train somebody else?
Nope. So, I am, I'm all in. If I wasn't all in, I wouldn't have threw my name in the hat. And so, I believe, it's a four-year contract if you get the, if you get the position. I believe if I get the position, I do a good job, you give me another, you just extend it out. I would like to serve for at least six to ten years, is where I'm at right now. So, that's the kind of commitment that I've got to make in this succeed.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Okay.
Okay. Could you share with the board a notable accomplishment both in your personal and your professional life?
Notable accomplishment of my personal and professional life? So when they trained me on how to move out and go into jobs, I was told I shouldn't talk about family. But the most notable accomplishment in my life is the birth of our two sons. That actually outranks anything I've ever done in the military. There's nothing else like that. So that's probably not the one I'm supposed to answer, but that's the reality of what I am the most proud of.
It's a matter I agree with.
So, so that, that may not be the answer everybody looks for, but that's the part that I am the most. Now, achievement. The only goal that Caroline and I ever set in our military career, once we got started, first off, you've got to realize, we thought we were going to go to the academy, we were going to spend our initial commitment, and then we're going to be back in Moorestown, probably at about the seven to nine-year point of our career. We're now at thirty-eight. That seven-year career's taken a little bit longer to get through than I probably thought it was going to, and definitely longer than she thought it was going to, and her family thought it was going to. But when we got into it, what we decided was, the number one goal that we set was to be a squadron commander. A squadron commander is the first leadership role that you get bored, you get boarded, you get on a list, and people select you to go in. And you lead airmen. And I led probably about two-hundred-and-twenty-seven. And that is where I fell in love with being a commander. And getting the opportunity to do things for airmen and touch their families and make a difference. So, the biggest accomplishment, that was the only goal we set. The biggest achievement and accomplishments that I've had in my Air Force career will be what the airmen that I've had the privilege of leading, go do with their careers. It's them getting a job after I've pushed them for a job. It's them achieving a rank after they've worked for me for a while and I've been able to develop them. It's them going out and doing something that I had a small part in, and giving them that opportunity to grow. That is what I take the most pride in, that I've been able to accomplish individually.
Thank you. Mr. Kendra.
General, I've got a couple of questions that I'll ask. One, I'm going to follow up with the other.
Okay.
In this school system, we have got AP classes, we've got dual enrollment. How do you feel about the decision on dual enrollment and how many classes that we have?
I think, I, I think they're fan, I think both of them working together is fantastic. Okay, it kind of goes into what I talked about a minute ago, each individual is different, and we got to do that. I think it's great. Just yesterday, the Commander-in-Chief of my house, let me know that she had encountered someone who, they had, had a daughter who was dual- enrolled, and when she graduates from high school, she's going to have a associate's degree in two different fields, and she's going to be ready to go out and do, I think that's phenomenal if that's what that young lady wanted to go do. I think it's fantastic. I think that may not be for everybody the way that it works. It may be you need that AP class. You know, I, and those AP classes can be important for a couple of different reasons. One of them is, you can get college credit. The other one is, over in central office, and I won't get the words exactly right, so please don't try to quote me verbatim on what it says. It says that the goal is to educate and graduate students that have been challenged, so they're ready to go off and do whatever they want. Part of that challenging may be pushing someone who wasn't really that good into an AP English class, so that they have to go work harder, and they learn better, and they're better educated when they get out into the world and they grow up. And the reason I'm pointing right here is, that is exactly what, what the counselor, the guidance counselors and the English did here for me, because I was not supposed to be in the AP English class with Mrs. Ware. That was not where I was supposed to be. But, they saw that I could grow, they challenged me to be better, they pushed me into an area that I would not have been comfortable without that. We need to continue to challenge these young men and women, because it builds in them I believe being a learning leader is really important. And so even after coming up on thirty-eight years of leadership now in the Air Force, thirty-eight years in the Air Force with multiple leadership roles, last weekend, I finished a book called Grit by Dr. Duckworth. And it talks about building resiliency within humans, so that when they get knocked down, they can get back up and they're ready to go again. And so, part of that is challenging them so that we make them work harder, and they get back up, and they're ready to get back up when they face a challenge. Because as we know, at this stage of our lives, everyone has challenges along the way, that they get knocked down, and they miss a step, and they've got to get back up and keep going.
Also, this county is a big sports county. How do you feel about, feel about sports being in our school system?
So, I think extracurricular, I'm going to answer it in two ways. Extracurricular activities writ large are fantastic. Because what they do is, it gets into what I said just a moment ago about challenging. Extracurricular activities like learning how to play an instrument, competing as part of the debate club, all of those challenge and they build resiliency, and they do that. I believe part of what I've been able to do in my career though, has come through what I learned playing sports. I learned how to do teams. I learned how to work together. I learned how to respect people. I learned how to work hard. I learned what it meant to make a commitment and follow through on that commitment. Life is a competition. And I believe that helped prepare me for what I was going to face when I got out into the world. There are some students though, that may not be athletes. They can compete in other ways. And they should compete in other ways. And I would encourage us to look at as many ways to give them extracurricular activities as we can, so that they learn, and they may grow in a way they never envisioned they would be able to do by doing those extracurricular activities.
What qualifications and values would you look for in your administrators? For example, central office supervisors, principals, and assistant principals?
So, I kind of gave you my core values when I started. Integrity first, service for self, excellence is all we do, that's kind of where I'm at for where I want to go. The one that's non-negotiable whatsoever is integrity first. You got to have integrity. If we don't have integrity within what we're doing, the rest of it will come crumbling down. We have to have that and be willing to come forward. I have to be willing to come forward if something's not going right, and tell you what's happening, and communicate it in a, in a clear manner, so there's, as I call it, no fuzz on that peach, and letting you know what it is. That doesn't mean you got to be "Eeyore" and "Owo, it's me, this happened." That means you just got to clearly communicate what's going on and let people know what's happening and be there. That one, foundational, complete, no questions, can't have any, any wiggle room there. Can't do that, we may need to do what I call addition by subtraction. Improving the overall team by eliminating a team member.
Thank you. Dr. Hassan.
Uh, this question. We may not be familiar with all, all the things that are going on with this year, but the school system, just curious to see, how familiar you are with, can you flood the form of the, both for Tennessee and the justice system in particular?
Yep, so, you know. I think it's a, I think it's a fantastic question. It gets on something that I left out of what I would want to do when I first got here. So that gives me a great way to tie it back in. It is obvious that Dr. Schwinn and Governor Lee are very committed to the schools and are pushing it really hard. The way that I understand it, if the bill is passed, which it's not yet, it's still going through, I know it's had thousands of comments, but if the bill was passed, as I understand it today, it's a billion dollars in twenty-three. And as you do the billion dollars in twenty-three, seven-hundred-and-fifty million of it is intended to move some schools out of floodplain areas, and two-hundred-and-fifty million of it is for teachers' salaries, and it already covers inflation. And so that's what's going to go into the twenty-three plan. Twenty-four is when it shifts. And when it shifts, it's going to be, it's going to be the base of what's there, based on the number of students. It's going to be additional money for those students that have extra needs and those things. There are going to be direct funds for certain areas to improve liter, reading proficiency at third grade level, extra help for the fourth grade level, additional monies into some of the CTE programs, and there's probably more there than I remember, but that's all part of that. And then the top of that is based on outcomes. And so those outcomes, as we build that entry-level strategy that we need to build, part of building that strategy is going to be documenting what achievements we want to make, and how we want to show the outcomes that we, working together, want to achieve. And so, the other part that we've got to, and so, I think that's really critical to be able to make sure we understand that, set those outcomes, set what we want those outcomes to be, because we together are going to have to report out on those to the state to get more of that, I think it's a hundred million dollars is the number, I believe it's the top of the pyramid, so that we can get those monies to do what we want to go do and improve the school system. So I think we working together have to make sure we understand that. The other part though, that we have to do, we have to start with the end in mind. That's another line that you will hear me frequently use, if I'm in this role, you don't just make a willowy decision on where you're going to go to start, because you've got to think through the second and third and fourth order effects of how it's going to play. Because as I understand it, in twenty-seven, the state starts dropping off its funding, and the local community has to start putting more money into it. So as we build these, this strategy, we've got to make sure that we're working with the elected officials that are going to control the budget, so that we're working together to drive this to where we're all being successful. Does that answer your question, sir?
Thank you. We have about five minutes if you'd like to make closing comments.
Okay, all right. So, thank you all again very much for this opportunity. I am extremely humbled to get the opportunity to be one of the three finalists. And you all are faced with an extremely challenging position and making an extremely important selection for this community. And as I said, I think it's a critical decision, because I think the vitality and the growth of the community is directly tied to the quality of the education system. And I believe that is really, really critical, that you all pick that person, the right one, whether it's me or it's not me, pick the best person for it, so that they can work with you to grow that. I do want the position. Okay, hopefully I've made that reasonably clear with how we've talked tonight. We are excited about coming back in the area. We want to be part of the fabric of the community and grow the community. And we want to do that. To the teachers and the principals and everybody working in the school system, thank you for what you're doing. I hope I get the opportunity to work with each and every one of you here in the future, because if I get this, I will work for. because if I get this, I will work for you. Thank you all for your service, your elected officials, you volunteered for this, and so, uh, thank you for doing what you do, because it's critical, and you're gonna make a critical decision, I know you're gonna make the right one, I know how committed you are to education here, and if I'm selected, I really look forward to working for and with each and every one of you. So thank you all very, very much.